Good evening. It is March 21st and this is our city council meeting. I'm Barb Noseworthy, your mayor, and we will start this meeting with a roll call, please.
Counselor Baxter.
Present.
Counselor Bossmans. Counselor Buell.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Youssef. And Mayor Noseworthy.
Present, thank you. We will next have the introduction of the translator. I believe that's Joshua.
Yes, great. I will go ahead and say this in Spanish first and then I will repeat in English. Entonces buenas tardes a todos. Yo me llamo Joshua Stallings. Yo trabajo con la cooperativa comunitaria de lenguaje. Yo y mi colega Elizabeth vamos a ser sus intérpretes hoy y queremos agradecerles por su compromiso con la justicia del lenguaje, lo cual significa que todas las personas tienen el derecho de comunicar en el idioma de su corazón. Vamos a estar interpretando esta reunión entre inglés y español simultáneamente y una vez que termine de hablar se activará la función de interpretación. En ese momento se puede elegir su idioma preferido. Si está participando en una computadora, elija el icono de globo en la barra de navegación al parte inferior de su pantalla y luego selecciona el idioma de preferencia. Y si está participando en la aplicación de Zoom de un teléfono o tabletas, elija los tres puntitos, selecciona interpretación y luego el idioma de preferencia. Y si usted es bilingüe en ambos idiomas, no es necesario elegir un idioma. Y por favor, recuerde hablar al ritmo de conversación para que podamos brindar una interpretación precisa de su mensaje. Muchas gracias. So, good afternoon, y'all. My name is Joshua Stallings. I'm here with my colleague Elizabeth and we'll be interpreting for you today with the Community Language Cooperative. Thank you all so much for your commitment to language justice tonight, which means that all people have the right to communicate in the language of their heart. So we'll be interpreting between English and Spanish simultaneously. And once I finish speaking, we'll go ahead and turn on that interpretation function. At that time, you can choose your preferred language. If you're on a computer, you will choose the globe icon on the navigation bar at the bottom of your screen and then select your preferred language. And if you are on a Zoom application on your phone or tablet, choose the three dots, select interpretation, and then your preferred language. And if you're bilingual in both languages, don't worry about it. You can listen to the original audio without choosing a language. And please just remember to speak at a conversational pace, especially for presenters, so that we can provide an accurate interpretation of the message. And thank you so much. I think we are good to go.
Thank you, Joshua. I will start this meeting as I have started this all-city council meetings and study sessions since I've been mayor, and that's with a land acknowledgement. That is my personal land acknowledgement. It does not represent the consensus of council or a discussion among council that, or individual council opinion. For thousands of years, this region was home to numerous people, bands, tribes, and nations. Each had their distinct culture, artistic expression, and community mores. In particular, this region was the ancestral home of the N'chut, Deney, Pueblo, Hopi, multiple Apache bands, and various other tribes and Latinx people who used and stewarded this land. I recognize that indigenous peoples were forcibly removed from their ancestral lands by the US government. It is important to recognize that the narrative of this region has mostly been told from the dominant perspective without recognition of those who came before us and who to this day continue to thrive, create, and connect with this land. Thank you for your respect in my acknowledging this legacy. Thank you. We will start with any identification of actual or perceived interests, conflicts of interest. Council, does anyone have an issue? Great. Then we will move to proclamations and I, we have a proclamation today. You're welcome to do so. And you're welcome to move in which way you need to to get the photo. Okay, perfect. Need my glasses. So, whereas during American Red Cross Month in March, we celebrate the humanitarian spirit of the city of Durango and reaffirm our commitment to help ensure no one faces a crisis alone. And whereas caring for one another is at the heart of our community and exemplified by the people of Durango, whose simple acts of kindness through the Red Cross provide help and hope in people's most difficult moments, continuing the life-saving legacy of Clara Barton, who founded the organization more than 140 years ago to prevent and alleviate human suffering. And whereas every day, these ordinary individuals lend a helping hand to make an extraordinary difference for neighbors in need, whether it's providing emergency shelter, food, and comfort for families displaced by home fires and other disasters, supporting military members and veterans along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenge, challenges of service or using vital skills like first aid and CPR to help others survive medical emergencies. And whereas their support, volunteerism, and generous donations are critical to our community's resilience, we hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all those who fulfill Clara Barton's noble words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it", and ask everyone to join in this commitment. Now therefore, I, Barbara Noseworthy, Mayor of Durango, Colorado, do hereby proclaim March as Red Cross Month. Thank you, and would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much. Thank you. This is a very much indeed a pleasure for me. It's an honor to represent all of the volunteers and the employees that we have here in southwest Colorado. Over the last 12 to 18 months, our presence here in, in Durango has gotten stronger. We've opened an office in the Keller Williams Building. We're bringing on an office manager to get a couple of guys straightened out. But it really, really is an honor and a pleasure to be able to receive this and for the Red Cross to be honored by the city of Durango. Thank you very much, Mayor Noseworthy.
And thank you for your service.
I have something for you.
That's me?
Everything has got, everybody has to have some swag.
I'll make sure we pack it out. Oh, how sweet. You know, I have to tell you, I taught CPR and I was trained by the Red Cross and one of my students saved a life.
So this is a t-shirt for our disaster action team. They're a team that go out for a whole farming and to aid people and help. And so now you're a semi-official member of our disaster action team. And since you taught CPR, you know what this is?
Not, it's been a while. I haven't seen that.
This is for the handcuffed CPR.
Oh. Very clever.
It's to represent the person on the chat.
Yeah.
So thank you again very much.
Thank you, sir. And I do encourage you, if you do not know CPR, to please get enrolled in a class because you can save a life. Thank you. All right. Next, we will move to public participation. This section of the agenda is set aside for the public to provide three minutes of comments or ask questions regarding items that are not scheduled for a hearing or public testimony or that, that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. City council will not respond to questions from the dais. Citizens should address their comments directly to city council. As this is a virtual meeting, the avenues for public participation have been adjusted. All written communications received by the city clerk by noon today have been delivered to council and will be summarized in a meeting minutes. And because we do not speak from the dais, I do want to say that we did receive the letter from, I think several of you are going to speak about today, about water quality in the Animus. And I do want you to know that I read that letter. It's very informative and I appreciate you coming to inform the public about it. And I also called our county commissioner to set up a discussion about that. So I did want to give that in advance. You'll have three minutes to speak and it will show up. Our moderator, our host will have it up on the screen. I will wave my hand when it's about 30 seconds and that will be kind of your cue to wrap it up. We will start with people who are physically present in city hall chambers and then we'll move to anyone virtually who wishes to speak. So I wanted to clarify that as well. And our first person, when you come to the, to the microphone, if you'll let us know if you are a resident of Durango, the county, or elsewhere. You don't, don't need to give your address. So the first person is Douglas Snow. Oh, okay, we'll come back to them, him, and then again. Okay, then we have Ellen Stein.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Stein. I live at 3314 East Fourth Avenue in Durango and I'm here to speak to the issue of the proposed dissolution and restructuring of the advisory boards and commissions, which I am greatly concerned about. I'm sorry, I didn't have time to prepare any written comments, but I have some notes from a letter to the editor that I wrote expressing some concern with great passion, mostly as a former multimodal advisory committee member and two years on that board. And the experience that I got from that as a citizen participating in local government, which was incredibly satisfying, is one that I want to see continue. The multimodal natural lands and parks and rec are proposed to be dissolved. And there is no way that that expertise, that is citizen input and expertise, can be recreated with the structure that you're currently proposing. You don't even have a solid recommendation from staff on how to make up for the lack of public participation that that dissolution would result in. And there are specific concerns when I hear what feel like competing goals. You're apparently trying to save us money, but who decides what's too much to spend on boards and commissions and supporting them when so many citizens are actively engaged in our community? This apparently also, this proposal meets some council goal. I saw in a response counselor Noseworthy made to one of my compatriots, what council goal and how does it differ? How is it that council goals differ from citizen goals? And I also am speaking as a representative of Citizens Voice Durango. Like, I just have seen a consistent decline in citizen, in access. And you all hearing, the public who elected you to represent us, we asked for a public forum for a year. We had to go to a petition to finally get your attention and it just seems to keep happening. You're not listening for next steps. Business owners do not want this. A good number of business owners do not want next steps. And now boards and commissions are on the chopping block and there is no good plan for replacing that expertise. So I implore you to revisit that, table that conversation, and reconsider because this community was built on public participation and that has to continue. And especially with taxpayer-funded initiatives having passed largely with the notion that there would be ongoing advisory boards and input consulting with the 2005 and 2019 taxpayer-funded and approved initiatives. So I'm not even sure your proposal is legal. And anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Has Mr. Snow returned? Okay. The next person on the list is Ty Churchwell.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Ty Churchwell. I am a resident of La Plata County, living just a mile outside city limits, but I do get city water and sewer. I'm here tonight in my capacity with Trout Unlimited. Trout Unlimited is America's largest and older cold water river conservation organization and our Five Rivers chapter here in town represents about 300 local members. Additionally, both of Durango's fly fishing stores are TU endorsed business members. I stand before you tonight in unity with numerous folks here in the audience. We're here to present a letter to Durango City Council regarding the health of the Animus River. In particular, we are deeply concerned about the unmitigated sediment entering the Animus River from Lightner Creek and the impact to the fishery and properties downriver. Additionally, there are illegal wastewater discharges into Lightner Creek from the Mobile Homes Park that the city is well aware of and we wanted to include this concern in our letter as well. The Animus River is a Durango treasure and it defines our community. Our tourism and recreation-based economy is largely defined by the river. Between the fly fishing shops and fishing guides, the rafting outfitters and boating store, the outdoor retailers, the train and darn near every storefront on Main Avenue, the Animus River directly or indirectly employs hundreds of locals and drives revenue for businesses and the city of Durango. The Animus River also provides a way of life amenity for locals. Many people choose to live here because of the recreational opportunities that exist nearby, most notably the river. The Animus is designated a gold medal trout fishery by Colorado Parks and Wildlife and is renowned for its big brown trout, especially downriver of Lightner Creek. The Santa Rita Whitewater Park is a big draw for kayakers and rafters and is a favorite feature for rafting tourists and locals alike. And the boat put-ins, the river trail and the riverside parks are examples of how the city has invested heavily in the Animus River while providing amenities to everyone. But the Animus River is not necessarily healthy and has been plagued by water quality problems dating back to our city's founding in the late 19th century. We are all aware of the historic mining pollution from upriver that even today threatens the fishery and the river's overall health. The Gold King spill was a wake-up call for all of us. Thankfully, a major federal super fund cleanup occurring now will someday soon correct the mistakes of the past and produce greatly improved water quality for everyone. But acidity and metals are not our only water quality problems. In fact, sediment from Lightner Creek is doing more harm to the Animus south of town than metals. Sediment smothers the river bottom and kills the aquatic insects that are trout food while preventing trout eggs from being viable. Additionally, the turbidity of the sediment in the water column renders the Animus unfishable following rain events over the Lightner Creek headwaters area west of town. And sediment clogs agricultural irrigation system and must be mitigated in domestic and subsurface drinking water supplies. The issue of sediment emanating from Lightner Creek Creek is not a new problem. Local river enthusiasts and conservationists recognized as far back as 2009 how bad the situation had become. With every rainstorm came a torrent of dark muddy water negatively impacting the Animus from Highway 160 Bridge to Farmington, New Mexico. Trout Unlimited and Partners commissioned a study in 2009 to identify the source of the sediment and what mitigation strategies might be pursued. The study concluded that the sediment originating from the Perrin's Peak and Hogsback area west of town and entered the city's stormwater drain system in the tech center area. Was that my three minutes? I could. We supplied the letter to you. I do have paper copies here for you as well. Please understand, we're here unified to speak on this issue and we want to partner with you to resolve the problem. So thank you for the opportunity.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe Mr. Snow has returned to the audience and since you were the first one to sign up, I want to honor that you're back in the, in the audience. Would you like to come to the microphone and indicate if you live in the city or the county or elsewhere? And also at about 30 seconds, I will start waving my hand and trying to catch your attention.
Okay.
Means needs to wrap up.
My name is Douglas Snow. I'm a resident here in Durango, Colorado. I was born and raised and I am here to talk about the issue of city council voting to eliminate advisory boards. I would ask that you guys decide to, oh, I am also running for city council. I ask that you hold off on that vote or decide to vote no. It sets a bad precedent for elected officials. And for those who are leaving, it presents, it leaves a, it looks like bad professionalism. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Next on our list is Buck Skilling.
Thank you. Counselors, thank you for the opportunity to comment. First of all, I and Five Rivers Chapter of Trout Unlimited are endorsers of the letter that Ty just got through presenting. I've been involved with urging the city to do something about the sediment problem in Lightner Creek for many years. I moved here in 98 and the sediment forming the delta from Lightner Creek in the Animus River was not a problem then. I was part of a group that funded the basin hydrology study, a study that I can make available because I have a copy of it if the city would like, published in January of 2011 of the Lightner Creek watershed that pointed to the Perrin's Canyon and Tech Center as major contributions to the sediment in Lightner Creek. The bottom line, this is a sediment problem. It starts on both county and private land in the county and then becomes a city of Durango problem in the form of stormwater management. Going forward, the settling basin at the bottom of Perrin's Canyon needs periodic and proactive cleaning out. Fortunately, a baffle on the downstream end of the basin was added recently correcting a design oversight with the original construction. We recognize the basin will sometimes be overwhelmed due to heavy rains, but that should not be a reason to simply let the situation continue as it has up to now. Bottom line is that this is an embarrassment for the city, that this sediment issue from Perrin's Canyon and the tech center is continuing, not to mention the impact on the aquatic life of the river. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is Sarah Birch.
Hello, my name's Sarah Birch. I'm a resident of the city of Durango. I'm also the Animus Riverkeeper with San Juan Citizens Alliance. Part of my job is to advocate for protecting and improving pure waters throughout the Animus watershed, which brings me here today. Sediment and biohazard discharges into the Animus River from Lightner Creek are concerning for the ecosystem, communities, and businesses that are all dependent on or adjacent to these waterways. The main stem of Lightner Creek is listed on the 303D impaired waters list with the affected use being aquatic life. According to CDPHE, Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, the listing stemmed from a macroinvertebrate assessment and the USGS suggests that sediment is the most common pollutant associated with impairments of macroinvertebrate communities. Not only are macroinvertebrates an important food source for the fish, but the fish require clear waters for visibility while searching for food. As we know, fish populations along the Animus are already limited to stretches where water quality is suitable for survival. So ensuring the best possible conditions for fish is critical due to the limited suitable habitat upstream of Baker's Bridge on the Animus. Furthermore, sewage discharge to Lightner Creek has been a growing concern in this community. The mouth of Lightner Creek enters the Animus directly above the Whitewater Park, which is the most popular paddling stretch in Durango. A recent publication found that potentially harmful pathotypes of E. coli are entering the Animus River from Lightner Creek. Samples taken in 2018 and 2019 found the presence of E. coli pathotypes that can cause life-threatening hemorrhagic diarrhea and hemolytic uremic syndrome, HUS for short. While both conditions are rare, that gene has been found in isolates taken from Lightner Creek. I want to address that sediment loading and biohazard contamination are two separate issues, but they are concurrently happening in Lightner Creek. Restoration of habitat and ecosystem function may be able to alleviate some of these current discharge issues if implemented correctly. And although it's not the city's responsibility to address the discharge of sewage into Lightner Creek, there might be options available that can address both the sedimentation and biohazard issues kind of at the same time. The city of Durango and its elected officials have worked diligently to provide its residents, visitors, and ecosystems the resources they need to thrive. That's why issues sourced from our local streams cannot be ignored. I urge the council to address the sediment and biohazard discharge issues by exploring options to partner with other key entities and work together to alleviate these impacts for the people and environment. Thank you.
And thank you. I apologize if I mispronounced your name. Emily Frogin? Frogin, okay.
You got the hard part right with Emily. Hi, my name's Emily Frogin and I'm a resident of Durango. And I'm here today to support the Lightner Creek letter and to urge the city council to address pollution issues in Lightner Creek. Spring through fall, I regularly paddle the town run and boat in the Whitewater Park. Also in the winter, I cold plunge in the river near the Whitewater Park. So I'm in there year-round and I also swim just below the confluence of Lightner Creek with my dog at the dog park. So I'm spending a lot of time around Lightner Creek and that area. And beyond my own issue uses of that stretch, I know that many folks in our community here cherish the Animus and it's the duty of our elected public officials to protect the environmental integrity of that river. There are two key issues in Lightner Creek that I believe city council should address, the sediment discharge and biohazards. Sediment runoff identified in a 2019 publication from the USGS suggests that. Sediment impacts macro invertebrates, which are the food source for fish. And also sediment affects water clarity, having an impact on river species. Additionally, as someone who frequently recreates in the Animus below Lightner, I am really concerned about the sewage discharge into Lightner Creek and the lack of public. Data on E. coli. And for these reasons, I'm encouraging the city council to address the sediment and biohazard. Issues along Lightner and explore options to alleviate impacts for the people and environment there. Thank you.
And thank you. Our next public speaker will be Sweetie Marbury.
My name is Sweetie Marbury and yes, I've been a resident of Durango for almost 50 years. Tonight I'm at city council to speak about dissolving boards and and commissions. And the relationship they have to the sales tax of 205, 2015 and the 2019. And the boards that discuss and prioritize these projects based on those monies. Voters approved these ballot measures knowing there was a board where they could go and ask questions, give input and discuss the pros and cons of projects. By dissolving boards and commissions, voters will not trust the council. So who loses on this proposal? The proposal of combining these crucial boards, the residents lose. They lose their voice. And we all know that coming to city council and standing in front of the podium, council will not address the issues. Council loses the background that the boards flush out in great detail on all of these projects. And citizens will lose trust in this council and the next one. Having one board to handle the sales tax projects sounds like staff goes to the new board. And one board makes all the decisions for Parks and Rec, multimodal and natural lands. That's unbelievable. There'll be many citizens at this at that meeting and it will take forever. Planning Commission will be taking on the Design Review Board and the Infrastructure Board, which handles streets, alleys. Stormwater sewers and water issues. And it's funded by the 2019 sales tax. And that is not fair to the Planning Commission. That's not what I voted for. The Planning Commission has their own projects to study and that proposal will drown them with work. Why? Nothing in dissolving the boards and conditions, commissions makes sense and defies logic. May you say for every you are, I went to the multimodal meeting last Wednesday and I gave public input. I didn't come here to address that issue. Without a without a multimodal meeting, I would end up at this podium. I listened to the infrastructure board yesterday. I want to be an informed citizen. Without participation and informed. Information by these boards, that's not the way to run a good government. 16 mayors stood up for our community by speaking about not dissolving the boards and commissions. It takes three votes to stop this chaos. It takes three votes to keep the boards and commissions. I'm asking that when you vote on April the 4th, three city councillors step up. And you do not dissolve the very crucial boards that Durango depends on. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom. Knopkin, Knopkin, thank you.
Hello, my name is Tom Knopkin. I'm a resident of La Plata County. But my business has been in downtown Durango since 1983. I am co-owner of Duranglers, a fly fishing company here in town. We've had a retail shop, guide service. Online store, you know, for coming up to 40 years now. And I am here in support of the Tribe Unlimited letter that Ty gave earlier. That we need to do something about the health of the Animus River, specifically Lightner Creek. When I moved here in 1983. To open our fly shop Duranglers, there was not a problem. All creeks can get dirty, but we don't have the didn't have the problem then that we have today. And something needs to be done about it. It continually gets worse and worse. And I'm here to. Reiterate what everybody else has said in support of doing something to help the Animus River. And I'm here basically to say that, you know, what's going on with Lightner Creek? It's bad for business. It's bad for Durango. It's bad for all of us. And you know, there's. There the Animus River is one of Durango's biggest assets and we need to take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Harrison Went, please come up to the microphone.
Hello, I'm Harrison Went and I am a resident of Durango. I want to thank Mayor Knowsworthy and Baxter and well, I appreciate it. I am. Here to first say that I was listening to the study session earlier. And listening to Scott Shine give a presentation about our housing initiatives and it is incredible and I'm excited to see. What the city continues to do over the next 10 years. And then I also want to come to council to ask that. We please vote no on the dissolution of the boards and commissions. There is institutional knowledge that some of these members hold that are going to be really important for the new council who comes on next month and I. Believe that this is a crucial part of our democracy and who we are. And as we can see today, we have. Bunch of community members who showed up to talk about how important. Lightner Creek is and our river and water quality and any any type of public participation is absolutely crucial and important to our democracy and our city government. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last person's on this list is Spencer Compton.
Hi. My name is Spencer Compton. I've been a Durango resident for 20 years and I live at 580 Animus View Drive. I'm a lifelong bicyclist and I've advocated for cycling as an alternative means of transportation for 17 years. I've served on numerous boards and committees at the state and local levels, including one of the nation's largest and most influential. Bicycle advocacy group Bicycle Colorado, where I was on the board of directors. I was the manager of the Durango Wheel Club for over 10 years and during that time I organized. And manage hundreds of group rides, cycling events, fundraisers, various community events in Durango and beyond. In 2014, I joined the City of Durango Multimodal Advisory Board. As the cycling representative and I've served as a member, vice chair and chair ever since. I strongly oppose city council's recent decision to dissolve the multimodal advisory board. And I strongly disagree with the city council's decision to change the structure of the other citizen advisory boards. In the broad and sweeping manner proposed by the city council. If any citizen or advisory board needs improvement, we can accomplish this individually, board by board. The advisory boards are a vital asset for our community. These boards provide a valuable avenue for citizen feedback and ongoing discussion of complex issues that impact our city. The members of these boards offer comprehensive and wide-ranging viewpoints. And areas of expertise and can give informed and thoughtful advice to city council and feedback to department staff. Dismantling this valuable resource without careful consideration and extensive outreach to the boards is hasty, improper and misguided. The multimodal advisory board is vital to progressing alternative transportation in Durango. It would be premature to dissolve the multimodal advisory board now because our multimodal network still needs to be finished. The multimodal department has accomplished a lot during the nine years that I've served on the board, but we are years away from being a complete network. There are more gaps in our infrastructure than there are safe routes to walk, bike or roll. Our transit system needs funding, improvement and expansion, and we need improved maintenance to current facilities and routes. This grows with every new family that moves to our ever-expanding city. Transportation touches everyone in our city and Durango citizens have voted overwhelmingly for a complete multimodal network and robust transit system. I am asking the current city council to preserve the multimodal advisory board and to abandon the proposal to change the structure of our citizen advisory boards and committees. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Spencer. I don't think anyone else has entered since we started, but I wanted to make certain that if anyone in the room was here. They had an opportunity to speak. We will now go to virtual. I see at least three hands raised on the screen. Our host will need to let the first person who's raised their hand. Unbe unmuted so that we can hear from them. Again, I will remind you there will be three minutes and that. Time will appear on the screen.
Shall I speak? I'm not sure if I'm invited.
I'm ready to go.
Okay, thank you. My name is Seth Burney. I am a city resident. And I just wanted to call everyone's attention to something that's really obvious, but it's important to reflect and that is Durango is exceptional. And one of those exceptionalities is the fact that we have extraordinary public participation. We've got. More boards than all of our peer cities and for good reason. It's a virtue. It's something we should appreciate and applaud rather than dismiss and consider we're out of the the norm. Well, thank goodness. We've arrived where we are today with what 20 plus years of boards being involved and helping to manage and guide this city. And I think we've arrived an extraordinary place and we have the benefit of thousands, if not tens of thousands of person hours. To have helped us arrive where we are today. And I think we should all applaud that and appreciate that and be really cautious. About changing a system that has served us so well. One other thing I think it's relevant is almost every councillor that came in that is sitting on this this council today. Promised to listen to the public and to be aware and to listen and all the rest. And as a rule, I think that's true, true. However, dismissing the boards is a decision that's being proposed for April 4th. That I think that public conversation simply has not taken place. I can say that when this was presented as an idea to the Parks and Rec Board. We were shocked. The board was floored. About the idea that the board was going to be dismissed or dissolved or. Reconstituted, use whatever term you may be, but. We are actively involved, spending thousands of person hours trying to help the city make good decisions. And we're shocked that the city was quite likely going to dissolve us. In March. And and we're still in a state of shock from that. And I think. It is really essential, you know, as I look at my own experience, I've been on this board for over seven years. And I've spent thousands of person hours reading things like the Animus River Management Plan, the 2020 Fox Open Space and Trails Plan. The Community Forest Management Plan, a dozen open space management plans. Who does that? Well, it's someone who's passionate about something and they care enough to invest their time honestly to the benefit of the community. And I think dismissing that experience is a threat and a real significant concern that I think this council should not choose to do. I would highly recommend this council. Involve the public in this conversation if you want to pursue it and table that decision until you've had. Any number of community meetings because I don't hear a single person of the public coming in and saying, we need to get rid of the boards. They don't work for me. I'm not hearing that. I'm hearing staff make a recommendation and council saying, that sounds like reasonable recommendation. But who in the public is actually saying, we need to fix this? I'm not hearing that. I'm hearing people saying, don't do this. Be careful. Don't, don't screw with the system that has worked so well. Please take your time and please table this motion until this has had a strong public conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Can our host unmute the next person who's raised their hand?
Yes, Mayor Lori Bryan, you should have permission to talk now.
Hi, my name's Lori Bryan. I have a 30-year resident. And I am against the dissolution of any volunteer advisory boards. I think it's a huge mistake and I think it's a bad look for city council to be doing it right before two people are leaving. You should wait till the new city council takes seats. And take a lot of public input before you make any decisions on that. I also think that Lightner Creek, something should be done about the. The solids and the pollution from Lightner Creek. It's definitely not good for the city of Durango and the residents and visitors and the fish and aquatic life. Please do something about that. It's been going on for a long, long time. And I just, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
And thank you. I believe there might be one more person who has their hand raised.
Yes, Mayor, Robin Wiles, you should be able to speak now.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
I am a resident. I've lived here since 76. And I firstly thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of retaining Durango's boards and commissions. Over the years, I've met several times with the multimodal board and their staff. And the staff and each time I've been impressed with the members' willingness to not just listen to my issue. But sometimes to immediately and efficiently act upon what was presented to them. It is so difficult to be heard in this world we live in. It seems like it gets harder every day. I am humbly asking this council, many of whom ran on citizen involvement and transparency. To bend over backwards in order to foster a vibrant partnership between the city and its citizenry. And I especially ask you, please do not remove any opportunity where community input can be of value. This isn't an indulgence, but I think a necessity. The idea our voices can be satisfied or understood. By allowing us only an unanswered scant three-minute presentation at council meetings is unsupportable. And frankly, I'm pretty sure it would be grounds for divorce in most marriages if carried on too long. It is a poor means of communication. Keeping these boards intact is a place where the city can make the most democratic of choices. Which also is a necessity to do wherever you see one to be made. This is a place where you can use your wisdom and your humility. In considering that these boards and commissions have worked well for far longer than most of us have even been here. They really should be one of the very last to fall victim to cost cutting. The citizens of Durango need your support in honoring their views and validating their voices. You set the standard for this. Please let us work as a team. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other hands raised?
No, Mayor, I'm not seeing any other hands raised.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your public comment. I appreciate it. I would like to ask council if they would allow. A consideration of changing the agenda to put the consent agenda next rather than presentations. And I ask that because I know there are people in the audience waiting, should they be called upon for the consent agenda and I want to be cognizant of their time. Is there support to change that order?
Yes, I support.
Perfect. Get the consent agenda language. So what we will do is we'll go to the consent agenda and then we'll return to city operational update. So the consent agenda is intended to allow the city council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under Agenda Item 9. May we have a reading of the consent agenda, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Items 8.1 and 8.2 are approval of minutes. 8.1 is from the city council study session on March 7, 2023. 8.2 is for the city council regular meeting on March 7, 2023. 8.2 is for the City Council Regular Meeting on March 7, 2023. Item 8.3 is discussion and possible action regarding a request for the vacation of a utility easement from Twin Buttes of Durango, Inc. 8.4 through 8.7 are requests for public hearings. 8.4 is to consider an ordinance authorizing execution of a tax-exempt lease purchase financing agreement in connection with an energy performance contract for the city of Durango, for City of Durango Facilities for April 4, 2023. 8.5 is to consider the McDonald's at South Fork Preliminary Development Plan, TBD's Zymrock Road. And that's for April 4, 2023. 8.6 is to consider the upstream preliminary development plan at 3104 East Fourth Avenue. That's set for April 4, 2023. 8.7 is to review and consider adoption of of an ordinance to increase Durango Fire Protection District impact fees. And then lastly, item 8.8 is for final approval of ordinance O-2023-5 approving an easement for La Plata Electric Association for installation of an electric utility line to service the Durango-La Plata County Airport.
Thank you. Does any councillor wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Then let's have this vote, please.
Councillor Buell?
Yes.
Councillor Baxter?
Yes.
And Mayor Nozworthy?
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate those that stayed, showed up to be available should we have questions on the consent agenda. On that, we will go back to city operations and updates and we'll turn it over to our city manager.
Mayor, I'm going to step out and speak with Hal for a few minutes. So I'm going to ask Erin to come up here and help with the operational reports. It should only take about five minutes and I'll be right back.
Great. Thank you so much. And Chief, we appreciate you being here tonight should we have any, should we have had any questions? Thank you. The multimodal. Yeah, I, is Devin? Oh, there he is. Good. Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. Give me one second and I will share my presentation. All right. So this is an operational update for the multimodal transportation plan. So this fits the City Council Strategic Plan under the Effective Infrastructure Network Goal. Updating the plan provides a multimodal transportation framework. Data will be updated and reflect current needs and challenges, and it will also approve existing deficiencies within the plan. Just wanted to provide a brief update on the timeline. So in 2021, City Council identified the multimodal transportation plan for an update and in their strategic plan, and that was to be concluded in 2023. So we're actually on schedule for this. In 2021, staff conducted public outreach and it was completed in 2022. And then in 2022, at the end of 2022, we began, we contracted with a consultant and began updating the plan, and that's where we currently are in the process. So during the public outreach, we had over 14 meetings and events and a total of 458 individual comments. So our outreach methods kind of varied during the 2021 period. As I'm sure everybody remembers, that was the height of the pandemic. So at the time, you know, we would swing back and forth between virtual and in-person meetings. We did have virtual meetings, some in-person zone meetings. So our current plan has identified zones throughout the city. And we had meetings in those specific zones within, you know, a public location that everybody in that zone could come to trying to meet people where they are. We also were at events such as the Clean Commute Week. We had booths at farmers markets where we asked folks questions, had surveys. We presented to a couple of Business Improvement District Meetings. We also had focus presentations with the Latinx Subcommittee as well as senior sitter folks. And we had an online comment map that allowed people to geospatially make comments regarding, you know, bike lanes, parking rides, things of that nature. And then we also had two online surveys for folks to provide feedback. So what we heard from the community, common themes from comments were expanding transit service and that includes, you know, hours, frequency routes, protected bike lanes. So that could be basically that's separating the bike lane from the roadway via a physical barrier. Safer pedestrian crossings, improved accessibility, slower traffic speeds, infrastructure maintenance, particularly regarding snow removal on sidewalks as well as bike lanes and just debris in general on those facilities. Better bicycle and pedestrian connections and connections to the hinterlands, otherwise known as the, you know, region in itself, you know, the county and outside planning area. So what is being updated in this plan? One of the big items is data. We have lots of interest in a lot of the infrastructure grants that are coming out right now. And one of the big things that our plan needs to really be able to to be considered an action plan is data. So we're putting crash data, demographics, traffic volumes, updating maps and yeah, providing that data that will not only help inform decisions and recommendations in the plan, but also will help us qualify as an action plan as we start to apply for future infrastructure grants. Vision and goals. So relooking at that vision and then also creating measurable goals and actions, which is another component of what the Federal Highway Administration, otherwise known as the FHWA, requires for some of their grants and an action plan. Project planning. So we've created a criteria framework and that the purpose in that is to help prioritize projects based off of data and a set structure. And then mapping connections and corridors and having community preferred treatments identified in the plan. So every time that we go for a construction project, we know, you know, what the community has provided feedback in the past as their preferred treatments for bicycle and pedestrian facilities. And then, of course, just addressing general subject material. You know, there's new trends and general references that need to be updated as well as just improving the layout and structure of the plan. So currently, we finished updating the vision goals and preferred treatments back in January and took that to stakeholders for review and input. Those items have been updated per the feedback we received. We have also created the criteria framework and corridors and connections. Those items were also taken to stakeholders for review and input in February and are being updated per that feedback we received. We're currently, staff is working with consultants to draft the plan and maps as well. And we hope to have that draft plan back to stakeholders, the public and city council for feedback in early spring of this year. So as far as next steps, like I mentioned previously, we will draft the plan and bring that back to city council. And we have an anticipated final plan up for adoption sometime in May is our goal right now. Any questions from city council?
I'll open it up to questions or comments from council.
I don't, I don't have any questions or comments. Thank you for the hard work and I look forward to seeing the plan in the spring.
Thank you for doing all the community outreach and engagement. Feedback from the community before you do this. I think that's great and I too look forward to seeing it. Thank you.
And Devin, I also want to add my thanks. I appreciate that community outreach and listening to what the community thinks about the plan and suggestions for improvement. Thank you so much. Erin, I believe we're going to hear about, let's see, it's going to be our diversity, equity, inclusion, cross-functional team updates.
Yep. With that next step, we have Guthrie Hardisty, who on behalf of the DEI CFT will be providing council with an update.
Okay, thank you very much. Hi, my name is Guthrie Hardisty. First off, thank you for your time. Thanks for listening to us. We're doing an update for the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Cross-Functional Team. The team is made up of Kyle Delamora, who is in the city manager's office, myself, I represent the Parks and Recreation Department, Devin King, who just presented from Transit, Spencer Snar represents the library, Mark Williams from Community Development, and Aaron Hyder is our staff liaison. Okay, the DEI Cross-Functional Team would like to present an update on past accomplishments and future recommendations and goals to focus on in 2023. This is our DEI roadmap that aligns with the city's roadmap. Kind of gives us a background of where we're, where we were, where we are and where we're going. So short-term leaders clearly articulate business need for DEI, create effective communication strategy for internal stakeholders, and establish DEI leader task force to guide and track implementation of DEI initiatives. This is all stuff we've been working on and have accomplished at this point. And medium-term city to provide DEI education and learning opportunities for all city staff. We've done this online through Zoom meetings as well as in-person. Establish points of contact with different community groups and establish methods of two-way communication for questions, comments, concerns. Long-term, we would like to have recruitment candidate pools and establish task force to examine the recruitment process to increase diversity among city staff and better visibility. So establish a way for departments to share DEI progress and challenges as well as assess understanding of the efforts. Why? The big question of why? For one, operationalize the work that of DEI that is accountable and adaptable to employees and the community. We want to make sure that everyone understands DEI work is not political or bipartisan. It's a healthy indicator of a higher performing organization. This all aligns with the city's strategic plan, our core values and the DEI roadmap. And we want to improve and enhance employee engagement, connection, belonging and safety. And DEI is smart business if the city wants to be an employer of choice. So our 2023 goals and recommendations, there are only four of them, so I'll try to get through this pretty rapidly. Number one, the DEI Diversity Equity Inclusion Cross-Functional Team recommends that the city adopt a land acknowledgement for city signage and websites. Our key takeaway is is this aligns with prominent Durango organizations that have and engage with the land acknowledgement and engage with staff and other organizations to create this land acknowledgement. Number two, department directors to include DEI and yearly staff goal development. We want to incentivize engagement at city functions and we're also going to add it to our existing health and wellness program to make it a little more accessible for all staff. Number three, include Durango's cultural history to the onboarding process in NeoGov. This is what all new employees go through. So it's a review of DEI learning and engagement series that we've begun and are continuing. As well, we've found some really good resources, educational resources from PBS, NPR and CERSA that will be readily accessible to new and existing employees. And number four, a comprehensive review and analysis of policies to ensure their adherence to DEI objectives. So revise policies as needed and clearly articulate the values of diversity, equity and inclusion specific to each department. And as well, an analysis to review policy, job descriptions, manuals, training manuals, policy and procedure stuff. So next steps, the DEI Cross-Functional Team will continue to refine the four DEI policy proposals and develop timelines for their implementation. Counselors will be asked to provide direction and input on a draft land acknowledgement in an upcoming study session. Do you have questions at this point?
Council?
No questions. Thank you for the great work and the presentation. It's great to see the progress you're making as the cross-functional team. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Guthrie, thank you and the team for your work. And I think your recommendations make sense and I look forward to the progress you continue to make. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Next, I think we're going to have Marty, an operational update regarding finalization of the scope for a proposed energy performance contract for the City of Durango Facilities.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and Council. Marty Poole, Sustainability Manager for the City of Durango, here to give an update on the finalization of the scope for the Energy Performance Contract that many may know as the EPC. So the EPC effort is falls under environmental sustainability and resilience primarily. And the goal is to reduce the energies, the city's energy and water consumption, increase renewable electricity, energy generation, help achieve our climate commitments and save the city money in the long term by addressing facilities upgrades and maintenance needs. So this topic has been reviewed at many council, previous council sessions. So I'll go through some of these pretty quickly. But the overall energy performance contracting process, the UPC process begins with an investment-grade audit. So when we see IGA, it's not intergovernmental agreement, it's in this context, investment-grade audit. Begins with an audit of our facilities that was performed in 2019 and 2022. And then based off that audit is a proposal, the contractor brings forward a proposal of the work that will be done on our facilities. Along with that is a decision for how to fund that, that scope of work that the contractor will engage with. And then the final scope and the final contract are agreed upon by the contractor and the city. So that is the overview of the process. Where we are at now, as you'll recall, in November, council voted to essentially restart the EPC process. It was put on pause in the spring of 2021 and that vote in November directed the city or city manager and appropriate staff to reengage in finalizing the process. So this would put us back on that left column. We're still in that zone where we're taking the audit and we are putting together a final scope. Today, I'm giving an update on how that scope finalization of process has gone. And then at the next regular council meeting, the final presentation on the scope along with the, a public hearing and first reading of the ordinance to consider the funding, financing option that we are pursuing will both come before council. So why, so what I'll be presenting is some changes to the scope that have occurred in November. And I just want to emphasize for the purpose of this update that neither city staff nor McKinstry staff could have brought anything clearer in November. That was the best information we had at the time. McKinstry wasn't going to go out and get repricing with, they weren't even under contract to resume that work. So that directive in November was to engage with McKinstry and city staff to direct the city manager and city staff to engage with McKinstry to update the scope. That's what that we were directed to do. And so here is that updated scope. So a major portion of the roof of the scope update came from the discovery that roof updates or roof replacements would be qualified for discounts under the Inflation Reduction Act, also known as the IRA. And so that was a pretty major change to how we're evaluating options for the scope of work. Essentially, two facilities, the service center and the rec center had more options opened up because they already had solar going on those roofs. And also looking at the IRA discounts and then how sold this new scope of solar and roofing together. Allowed us to revisit some additional solar PV options. We acknowledge that we're looking at staff capacity and expertise. We will be engaging McKinstry, the contractor to do operations and maintenance on the solar systems because we don't have that expertise in house. And then we confirmed that the showers that the rec center were looking at, they tested those out and they're they're good. I don't know what process that involved, but we have the thumbs up from the facilities managers that the showers are okay to do at the rec center. I just think that one's funny. So the reductions that we heard from council members, members of the public and also from facilities managers that we really wanted to hone in the scope of that sort of ongoing advising and services package known as Power Ed. So we've reduced and and really honed in the scope there, which reducing resulted in cost savings. The city hall HVAC was taken out of scope because there's not enough confidence in the future of this building to justify an HVAC upgrade at this time. And Animus River Trail Lighting, the original pricing didn't include dark scare, dark sky, dark sky compliant fixtures. And so when we did the repricing on that, we discovered it was unfortunately. It was out of. It was too high. The pricing was too high. So we're gonna look at other kind of incremental options for replacing Animus River Trail Lighting with dark sky compliant and energy efficient fixtures using other processes. Here's a financial breakdown of the pricing impacts of the additions and subcrash, subtractions and decreases. I'll note in the pricing decreases section, we actually, that represents two opportunities for increases in funding. So the they're shown as negative because they reduce the project overall cost. But they are, they represent an opportunity to take to take advantage of grant funding or federal discount funding. So here is another breakdown of how that pricing breaks out. And then finally, on that last line, you'll see the ultimate change in scope. So this represents primarily that increase in solar and roofing opportunities, which I would emphasize that roofing has to be done anyways in in short order. And facilities improvements are were identified as one of the top council priorities. And so this is an opportunity to lump in something that has to already be done in one way or another into this package of opportunities and really fast track it. And then you'll also see that we are seeing a 60% price increase from the original quoted prices, which is you've been seeing across projects for the past several years. And so next steps, April 4th, we'll bring a final financing and fiscal impact report through the the public hearing for the tax exempt lease purchase. And first reading on that ordinance, final review and the scope of benefits of the EPC. And again, these are two parallel actions. One is the ordinance on the funding and then the other is the resolution to the potential resolution before council to move forward with the final EPC scope and pricing. And with that, I'll take any questions.
First, I'll jump in, Marty. Thank you for this work. It has been a long road. I know. How many years have you been here now? A year and a half, two?
Year and three months.
Year and three months and you've worked on it this entire time.
Yeah.
Questions from council.
No real questions. Thank you for the presentation and thank you for all your hard work going through this. I know it hasn't been easy. I like, I really appreciate that you're able to add in some of that scope to fast track it and be smart with what we're already doing. And so I appreciate those efforts. So thank you very much.
I would agree with that. Anytime we can reduce our costs of things like roofing and add solar to it is it's a great comment.
And I have no questions, Marty.
Great. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor.
So I guess I do want to clarify, this will be coming on April 4th. Will that be the first reading and will we need a second reading?
Yes, that would be the public hearing and the first reading of the ordinance and that is specifically to the funding mechanism that we are proposing. We use the lease purchase funding mechanism.
So a second reading could be taken in in April as well and no vote.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah.
City manager. Good to have you back. Thank you. And we are in the capable hands of the Assistant City Manager.
Awesome.
Let's see, where are we now? We are. We have no public hearings tonight, but we do have some ordinances which I will turn to our interim city attorney to provide information on.
Thank you, Mayor. The first is an ordinance approving the annexation initial zoning for the Cummins additional addition annexation of the city of Durango, declaring an effective date. And this is ordinance 2023-06.
Any questions for the interim city attorney? Do we have a motion to approve this?
I'll move that we approve the ordinance approving the annexation and initial zoning. Eight, which is ordinance 2023, sir.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Then please call the vote.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
And Mayor Nozworthy?
Yes. Onto item 12.2. Again, the interim city attorney will provide the information regarding this.
Thank you, Mayor. This relates to the Animus Mountain Vista rezoning application. It's an ordinance for the purpose of amending the zoning of that real property located within the city of Durango pursuant to chapter 27 of the Code of Ordinances and declaring an effective date. This would be ordinance 20-23-07.
Any questions for the interim city attorney? Do we have a motion?
I'll make it, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 20-07 for the purpose of amending the zoning of real property located within the city of Durango, Colorado pursuant to chapter 27 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Durango and declaring an effective date.
I will second. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
And Mayor Nozworthy?
Yes. And item 12.3, again, we'll call on the interim city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance that would amend portions of chapters two, three, four, six and seven of chapter 27 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Durango, which is part of the land use development code. It's been previously discussed with city council and summarized in some prior sessions. This one includes among a variety of text amendments. It adds a definition of a food truck pod. It also declares an effective date. This would be ordinance dash, sorry, ordinance 2023-08.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve ordinance number O-2023-8, amending chapter 27 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Durango by the amendment to portions of chapters two, three, four, six and seven, designating and adding a definition for the new commercial use called food truck pod and declaring an effective date.
Second.
And is there any discussion? Please call the vote.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
And Mayor Nozworthy?
Yes, thank you. Next, we have general business and I see some in the have remained all evening in the audience for this portion. This is discussion and possible action to consider a request from Mana for joint sales tax to fund the position of coordinated entry system manager. I believe you're going to be coming up. Is that correct, Ann? And a city manager, did you have any comments related to this?
Not really, just a quick overview. Ann Morris did provide a request for proposal on joint sales tax funding. The county did hear on this item the beginning of this month and were supportive of using joint sales tax funding. So they are looking for concurrence from the city council if this is a, a, an approval of use of funds for joint sales tax. So with that, I will pass it on to Ann.
What I was, Elizabeth Sulkind, who is the Director of Housing Solutions is on the online. If that's possible, if I do a little piece and then pass it to her, is that okay?
Yes, I want to make certain our host can promote her to a panelist so that she's able to speak and possibly be seen. Thank you.
Yes, there, I can do that.
Thank you. And just to kind of quickly recap, the two positions or what we're asking for and then can answer questions. So back in 2019, the city and the county came together and funded a strategic plan on homelessness. Out of that plan came different goals, one of which was a navigation center slash resource center. So in 2020 in December, the city and the county released an RFP for a contract for the creation of a navigation center. Mana applied to that contract and was awarded funding in 20, sorry, 2021 for the amount of $70,000, which wasn't the original amount that was going to be requested throughout the strategic plan. In 2022, we were rewarded through the joint sales attacks, 170,000 for the help for funding the navigation resource center. And so what the resource navigation center does is that we work to help with food, housing and employment security. So we provide supportive services, case management, resource navigation. We work with partner organizations to do that. Just in, we opened March 28th of 2022. Within almost a year, we've seen over 1,650 unduplicated participants. So the need is great. And in average day, we'll see around 80 participants in a four hour period up to about 140. So that kind of gives you a brief description of the resource center. We also in this RFP were tasked with forming a coordinated council on homelessness. At which we did June of 2021. So the coordinated council on homelessness has run for a year and a half. In December, we did stop having those meetings per coming to the county and city and requesting that we might change that structure. With talking to the coordinated council on homelessness, the city and the county, we moved forward with a plan on supporting the continuum of care, which is already in existence and is a structure that the state and the federal government require us to do to receive federal funding from HUD. And so Housing Solutions has run that for decades. And with that, they have not had the proper funding to actually support a full time position to provide a real support for people experiencing homelessness with moving forward to stable housing. And so what we kind of talked about through our meetings is really support an existing structure that's already in place. That does a lot of the things that the coordinated council already does, which was getting together, talking resource navigation, partner organizations, you know, working towards, you know, sorry, partner organizations working towards helping people experiencing homelessness get into stable housing. So we felt this was a good way of putting resources to an existing position and existing system that kind of we were duplicating. And so I have Elizabeth also here that she could talk more about this position.
Elizabeth, if you can undo your, make your video available, that would be great. And our host may need to do that for you.
I think it has to happen from your end, but it's okay with me. I am on, okay, there we go.
Why don't we just have you present? Oh, you got it. Okay. We're not seeing video, but you're welcome. Oh, there you go. Perfect. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Week two of COVID. Isolation. So glad to see some faces. So I just wanted to, I'll be real brief. Really explain the structure of coordinated entry. It is the HUD federal required structure. So that has evolved, let's say, over the past five plus years into a very specific type of required structure. The good news about it is we're very familiar. We were one of the first in the state to get our region together and develop the process for it. So it's, I think, running smoothly at this point for the amount of stepping that we can devote to it. It, it is the source of two parts. It really has two jobs. One is functioning very effectively now, which is the vetting of housing and related opportunities for people who are homeless. And the goal of the vetting is that the person that's most vulnerable is selected, not somebody that's first on a list. And they also have to match the opportunity. So there's an assessment, a federally required assessment tool that determines really vulnerability of an individual and the attempt is made to match the individual with the proper resource. We all know there's not enough resources and no matter what we do, there's not going to be 100, you know, 100% of what we would, you know, maybe like in our ideal world. So the goal is to get it to those who need it most and where it's appropriate. So the way it does it is through a collaborative group. It is open to agencies that work with homeless individuals. Could be nonprofits, it could be governmental, the police departments are often involved in other areas of the state, that sort of thing. So it's open and who could be a member. Mostly the part that determines the individual's opportunity is the case manager level people who are working with those and have direct information about those on this coordinated entry list. So they will come to the meeting when a housing opportunity is available or a homeless person opportunity. It does go a little bit broader than, you know, straight up housing. And as a collaborative group, make a decision, but it's not based on politics or on this or that. It's really based on the assessment that's been made and, you know, information from those directly providing services for the person. But what is nice is let's say there's someone that's not communicative with maybe an agency or is not working with a case manager. They still could rise to the top because of the information that's been collected on, you know, that person. And so that it is just designed to take the opportunities that exist and get them to the right individuals. So that's part one. Part two is what I would call the policy, the grand opportunities, the higher level strategic planning type of piece. I'm not saying it's equivalent to the strategic strategic planning of like the city, but it's for that group and for those types of opportunities. The group as a whole really can work very effectively to make recommendations, for example, to a city about potentially changing this policy or that policy. Or, you know, it's a group that can work pretty heavily on policy and grant opportunity level. What I've seen naturally happen is as we were close, more closely together at that level. We've been able to collaborative come together and seek additional funding opportunities for our communities. So we are working far more closely together as organizations that than we ever used to. And this is the mechanism that that brings that all together. So, you know, I mean, that's just to put it bluntly, what coordinated entry is, we don't have any funding for coordinated entry. Never had any funding for coordinated entry. What we've done is just sort of work around and, you know, use some general purpose funding. And therefore we don't, don't and never did have anyone who's a major part of their job was to make this as robust as it could be. So I think where we are now is we're effective, but we are not. So I think where we are now is we're effective, but we are not taking that extra step, you know, that some communities have where they have a very engaged, effective coordinated entry because they have more staff time to, you know, make that happen. So that would be a bonus to our community. I think the results would be more funding opportunities coming to our community and better, better formulated proposals. I mean, sometimes we'll find like, oh, we're applying for this and maybe there's a other organization that had thought about the same thing. Well, instead of us kind of juggling that last minute, we would be coming to the table at the beginning of that period, working together, figuring out what maybe is the best idea and jointly as a community, really, you know, really applying for more opportunities from state, federal, or, you know, other opportunities, foundations, et cetera. So, I mean, I don't know, Anne, if you have any other comments about the structure, but that's essentially the two parts of coordinated entry. And we've struggled to find a way to make it work financially.
Thank you.
I could just say one quick thing.
And we, and will you also share with the public the amount of your request, please?
Yeah, definitely. Um, I'm going to make a comment, then I'll share both numbers. So as you can see, it does a lot of what the coordinated council on homelessness was doing, but it has that additional piece of the direct services and actually getting people from homelessness into stable housing. So I think it's just, it just does more and with that direct service piece as well. Our request for funding is $170,000 for the Manna Resource Center and $60,000 for the coordinated entry position.
And that would come from the joint sales tax.
Correct.
And I'll, I'll remind the public also that the county has already, in principle, supported this.
Correct.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Anne or Elizabeth?
I guess the only other thing I would say, which is new since the paperwork went in, is that Anne and I and, and CMP have been working jointly together, well, for many years now, but on a proposal through Bezos and through that grant, which recently got approved and is now being tweaked. We're going to be able to devote a, you know, small amount of that funding for three years to this, to the coordinated entry. So it would help supplement the piece that we'd hopefully receive here. And so we're not expecting city, county to essentially pay 100% of the cost. This really is a, a regional-minded organization or group. And so, you know, we are seeking other funding sources to supplement it.
So does counsel have any questions? And if not, it will there be, can we have a motion then related to this? Do you have a motion printed? No, we can, we can write that.
It'd just be a motion to support.
Yeah.
The use of joint sales tax funds for management.
No problem. Question, any questions?
I don't have any questions. Thank you for the presentation, both of you. And I appreciate the shift in focus from coordinating council on homelessness, realizing that this is like a better path forward to really see and move the dial on some important topics. And so I love that we have so many organizations that we can work with to just make sure that we're doing everything we can to, you know, try to support your efforts and, yeah, everyone's effort. So thank you. Yeah.
Thank you to both of you. I, I agree. I think the idea of the continuum of care and how you're all working the way it was working before. I'm interested in, as this goes along, reporting back to us on how, what changes this is making, what gaps we still have, what we need in order to fill those gaps, if we're being effective or not. I think that'll be critical come up next year when this request comes up again, because I, I don't doubt that it will. And I also heard you say something about making recommendations around policy and things like that. I'm also interested in hearing what you have to help move us along in our strategic plan implementation. I know somewhere in one of the documents, she said the, you would no longer be responsible for the strategic planner, would not be responsible for it. But I think that your group and the people that you work with are the ones who know how to make that happen and have the expertise to do so. So I look forward to hearing recommendations about whether it be policies or actual actions that will move that strategic plan forward in the future. So we're not just stuck with the good work we're doing now and we never improve. I love that you're working together. I love that it's a robust coordinated entry rather than a passive situation. I think that's really the way to make it happen. And I'm also concerned that there are those in our community who act, who absolutely will take advantage of this opportunity and the help and the support that's supplied and move through the system and do good things, but there are some who won't too. And I look forward also to recommendations about how do we approach that? Is it mental health? Is it substance abuse care? And how do we, I know the state manages that situation, but how do we encourage the state and advocate with the state for more mental health and substance abuse care in our communities and our region? Because we, I think we desperately need that. And without that work, I don't believe that the problems that we're addressing can be mitigated as well as they could be otherwise. So I kind of have some requests here as well as support for what you're doing. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. And I think we can definitely come back with a lot of those recommendations.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I will move to support the request for joint sales tax from Manna to fund the position of coordinated entry system manager.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Counsel Baxter?
Yes.
Counsel Buell?
Yes.
And Mayor Noseworthy?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Anne and Elizabeth, for your leadership in our community and your collaboration. Thank you. Next, we have the discussion and possible action approving a resolution to amend the 2023 budget for the purpose of budget adjustments to the 2023 appropriations from the general fund for housing. City manager, did you need to do any or want to do any kind of opening?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. I think this is just a follow-up from the study session and let Scott and Devin handle it.
Great, thank you.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Scott Shine with the Community Development Department. Devin Schmidt is also here. Just to represent really that it's been a team effort to get us to this place and we're very fortunate and excited to be here tonight. Something that seems kind of standard or routine, a budget appropriation is actually very exciting and going to be a major milestone for our housing efforts in the community. And we appreciate council's support and guidance on this effort. So as we start, I just wanted to point out that, you know, this request really tangibly supports the vision that council has adopted and set for the community to be an authentic, diverse, multi-generational and thriving community. We need housing options to support all of the aspects of our community. And that's what this action tonight will help us accomplish. The process to get here and the rollout of these funds, the use of these funds display the core values as well that, that the city council has adopted, that I think city staff tries to adhere to daily as we do the work of, of running the city. And it's taken many departments' efforts. Community development is in one sense the recipient of these, these funds and will, will steward these funds. But we work very closely with Public Works on all these projects. We work with the police department with finance and budget very closely, the city manager's office, and obviously under that direction of city council. So it really does display all of these things that, that we're walking the walk. We're not just putting things up on the wall and saying we, we want to do this, but it's actually having an impact. So with that introduction, we'll move into the details of the request to approve a resolution to dedicate significant funding for housing initiatives by transferring funds from the general fund opportunity reserve account from our American Rescue Plan Act funding and to appropriate grant revenue from state of Colorado. So a little bit of background, council knows a lot of this, but we feel it's important to, to present this so that the community sees it as, as part of your deliberation on the request. These are the priorities that were ranked at the council retreat just recently. You can see housing and facilities receive the most votes is for the highest priority. This is supported by a lot of community input, community surveys and a variety of things. All point to housing options being the, should, should be the number one priority at this point in time. So we used some research and analysis that we did on past residential unit production to, to give council some guidance on the amount of funds that we could use. We saw on average in the last 11 years, 148 units were constructed per year. So we looked at if we generate 150 new units per year and through the use of public investment, we're able to get 20% of those units to be below market to meet our income goals. That would take about $4.2 million a year, based on our experience of how we get a rental unit or an ownership unit down to that below market range. That would give us about 400 new units in 13 years at a total cost of $56 million if we allocate that 4.2 million every year for 13 years. I will say, I think we can get to that number sooner based on our current pipeline and the work that, that the housing division has done. But that's a good sort of relatively simple analysis to show you how we got to the numbers that we did. So after that presentation during the retreat, council gave staff some guidance on pursuing an option to, to meet those funding goals, looking at potential sources of funding. So staff went back and looked at the general fund opportunity reserve, the ARPA funds. And the, the request before you is to allocate $3.2 million from that opportunity reserve, $1 million from the ARPA funds, and then another $1 million from recently awarded state funding through DOLA's innovative housing funding program. We think by doing that, we can sort of capitalize on the projects that are right on the cusp of, of being constructed. Can use that, that funding to make sure there's a mix of income levels in a lot of those developments. And I'll share the specifics with you in a minute. We also think, and council gave us the guidance to use that so that we're moving towards a possible ballot question and demonstrating to the community what can be done when we have a local funding source that's significant enough to, to really make, make an impact. We have been working hard to use the resource we have. I want to pause here and just say, a lot of these accomplishments, a lot of the work that's been done to get us, get us to this point is in large part due to Eva Henson, our housing innovation manager, whom you've all gotten to know very well. She's on a well-deserved vacation with her family, but she deserves a lot of credit. And thanks for hard work to get us to this point and to accomplish these things. I'm about to summarize. In 2022, we used $431,654 to secure 34 below-market units. You can see the projects there where those units are located. That's a very good return on that investment. I believe we used it, used some other sources of funding, URA money and TIF money to get those units, but from the housing innovation division, that was the commitment of funds. And that's why I think we will be able to show significant progress if this appropriation is approved. We have, these six are just kind of a snapshot of the larger projects that are sort of positioning us to get over 500 below-market units. If we can act quickly, that's not all going to come online this year or, or maybe even next year. Those will be kind of phased in, but all those projects are teed up to provide significant amounts of below-market units. Everything from some ADUs in, in existing residence backyards to BLD apartments, which is a major, almost 500-unit apartment project with some below-market units integrated into it. So we feel like we'll be able to quickly deploy these funds to, to make these a reality. Over the past year, year and a half, we've brought in $4.12 million of outside funding. That's not including our federal ARPA funds. That does include the $3 million for Best Western in this $1 million grant from DOLA. But that just shows how local funding can be used to really demonstrate to outside entities that we're invested here and they want to partner on successful projects. So we've been successful so far in that regard. We're also focusing on the policy side of things, amending our code, setting up what could be thought of as smaller scale programs to incentivize more just dispersed housing options. It's not all concentrated in one or two large projects, but it's spread out throughout the community. The housing innovation division, again, Eva, Dreah now is in that division and Mark Williams is a planner that focuses a lot on residential developments, have put together a really good framework for how we plan to use these funds. You can see the six areas here that we, we want to invest in. And I want to share a little bit more about these two components on the left here, new housing development and adaptive reuse. So one of the big things we think about is how can, when the right project comes in, how can we make sure that that's getting through the review process efficiently and effectively? And, and we're moving towards construction in a, in a streamlined way. And so we put together this visual to communicate to the state our intent to set up this housing accelerator pipeline and this, this streamlined review for the projects that are delivering below-market housing. So you can see how we, we take an idea, use partnerships with the Economic Development Alliance and the Regional Housing Alliance to get them teed up, maybe help them with acquiring property, with the design work that they have to do in order to submit for approval. Once that happens, there, they can be a priority project and we can use the funding that will be allocated tonight, hopefully, to invest in these projects and ensure that there's a public benefit by supporting infrastructure, construction or offsetting some of the fees. As I mentioned in the study session, using public funds for these purposes, I feel is very justifiable, very defensible use of funds because we're ending up with a tangible public asset in a lot of cases, a sewer main or a water main or sidewalk or a river trail. Things like that will be a result of some of these infrastructure investments. Fee offsets can be used to offset some of the larger fees, like road impact fees, sewer and water impact fees as well. So I'm happy to come back to this and answer any questions if you have any. But we're really excited about this model. It lines up with direction that the state is giving about how to be eligible for additional state funding. So we're continuing to be in lockstep with the Division of Housing and the Department of Local Affairs. So with that sort of general process overview, here are a few specific projects that we will plan to use some of this funding for. The West Side Mobile Home Park will, will most likely be pursuing annexation. It's now owned by Elevation Community Land Trust. The land trust model is very exciting. We've, we've done a lot of research on this recently. Excited to share that with council in the near future. That model can also be used for three springs to ensure affordability in perpetuity and allow for upward mobility. These are ownership units so people can get in, they can realize some, some appreciation. And then, you know, maybe move up to a new unit in that same neighborhood or move up to a different unit in Durango, which is, there's benefits from that as opposed to, to renting. Best Western Motel Conversion, you've heard a lot about. Both of those projects serve members of the community at 60% of the area median income or lower. So that's low to very low income. And then these other projects are looking at more of that workforce housing, the missing middle. And then these other uh projects are looking at more of that workforce housing, the missing middle as it's often referred to in the eighty percent to one hundred and twenty percent area median income. Uh the Three Springs project, we just submitted for congressionally directed spending in partnership with the Southern Ute um tribe and we're we're hopeful that that's an innovative approach that's going to uh catch the attention of um our congressional delegation and uh hopefully get at least some support for that project that way. But we are moving forward with some funding that was already appropriated um to support the design of Wilson Gulch Road Extension uh and some water and sewer infrastructure. So that's already in motion. This will just help us to take the the next step. Um these other projects are a mix of ownership and uh rental projects again in that workforce range of eighty to one hundred and twenty percent AMI. So all of these are right teed up, right on the cusp of of becoming realities and and this funding will uh ensure that we can have uh uh we uh a seat at the table for these projects uh and get some uh significant number of below market units. So just a couple of quick summary slides. Uh I said that already, but but just a really clear breakdown of what you're being asked. Uh it's a overall appropriation of five point two million dollars. Um two million of that are is either state or federal funding and three point two is from that general fund opportunity reserve. So those are the numbers and then looking at it more uh sort of the formula that that we're looking to implement. Uh we have available resources, this money is there, it's undesignated right now. Council has the opportunity to really demonstrate, you know, your commitment to housing. We take that very seriously as a staff that that you're uh considering uh uh allowing us to steward those public resources. We're going to report back to you regularly, make sure you and the community know that those are going um to to good work and and achieving outcomes. We feel like we have community consensus on the housing issue at large. Um we have a great number of partnerships, both at the private sector nonprofits. We work with Elizabeth Salkind and her group on a number of projects. Uh I mentioned the tribe and GRVP at Three Springs. Uh the the Economic Development Alliance, the Regional Housing Alliance, all of those are core partners. And as I've mentioned, we've demonstrated that we have a model that we can scale up and we we've done this. It's sort of a smaller scale and we're excited what we can do um to scale up and and have a real uh transformative impact on housing in the community. So with that, uh it's the recommendation that council approve the attached resolution authorizing the appropriations to the housing fund. If you have questions on the specific numbers, Devin's here too about the remaining uh opportunity reserve balance and things like that.
So I will open it up for questions and comments from council.
Go ahead, okay, I can start. Um I don't know if it's the unicorn tie or Eva and her team's hard work, but that presentation was amazing, so thank you. Um no, it's so exciting to see um how when we, um what was it, a year ago we hired Eva or a year? Yeah, so a year and like three months ago and everything that's been accomplished when we have really like solidified and worked toward a goal. Um uh councillor Baxter brought up a good point and I'm sure she'll mention it now, so I won't stay, say her words. No, you, are you going to say? Well, no, 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 it's fine. Um but um about just some the the previous efforts that other councillors have done um in in the housing department, but it clearly wasn't enough and I think obviously like COVID exacerbated things and projects weren't getting built anymore. There's like a lull and then the price of housing. And so it it has re- in recent years become such an important um focus that we've had to really switch, I think. Um I don't think the city had to get involved in housing or have a housing department in the past and things got done despite that and now they're not. And so I think that the shift um in council direction and city focus, um the creativity of our staff is unreal and what Eva has been able to do with her team with the money that we have has been um astounding and I hope us actually like saying like we are committing this money to specific housing and and you know, what can you do with it? And hopefully our community can see what we can do with it. And if it does come to an election um where we do need to have, you know, funds on a regular basis basis, the community can get behind it with all the success that we're having. So that presentation was great. Thank you so much. Um and I appreciate, yeah, all that your team does.
Council Baxter.
Ditto. Um I just wanted to say a couple of things about some specifics in here and um one of them is that with four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, you produce thirty-four units, uh which is just under thirteen thousand dollars a unit. So I firmly believe that we can be much more effective and successful than the amounts. I know you're being conservative because you want to be able to achieve goals and you and you know that there are roadblocks along the way, but I firmly believe that the way that we're thinking and the models that we're developing, we can continue creating things um with these dollars that'll be outstanding. I also want to recognize that with the the roadblocks because we know that part of that is build rate. So um getting developers involved who can build those number of units and make it all happen because of the costs that we're seeing with um not just interest rates for uh construction, but also materials, labor, all of that. Um and the absorption rates, so the rate at which people buy those um units and move into them. Um where those are the two things that are going to hold us back. And I think that um by showing our commitment to this, we will be attracting the kind of developers and the kind of um needs or the kind of support that we need to make this happen because we're already ahead of the game. We're doing this so much better than most of the communities in our state that I really think that will be seen as a place where we can do that there. It happens, the city works with us, we can make it happen. Um one of the things that the catalyst fund, and I want to talk about that for just a minute. Uh one of the discussions that we had at the Economic Alliance the other day was one of the huge challenges for contractors is construction dollars and what they're having to pay, which is around ten percent now for construction dollars, which may be anywhere from three months to a six month loan. And the catalyst fund and the Economic Alliance and some of their partners who are looking at investing into that catalyst fund are looking at possibly having a fund that is used for helping to finance construction costs, getting paid back when they get the actual um uh normal loan, if you will, and have that be a revolving fund. So that's another way that our community can work together and attract dollars to help us um overcome those roadblocks and be ahead of the game. Um I also want to mention something that you said about the public assets that we're creating, like sewer and water lines. And you are absolutely right. And it's not just a physical asset, but because of that asset, there will be homes and um whether they be rental or ownership, that people will be living in and that will be generating revenue for the city. So we could actually sit down and put paper or pen to paper and find out what the payback on that is. And it may be twenty years, it may be thirty years, it may be forty years, but because we're um we're in municipality, we are like ideally suited to be able to play that long term game and to get those returns and to make it happen for our community. So I'm very, very excited about that. Um sorry about this. I just have a whole bunch of things here. I think you all know that housing was my like my big thing for me, especially when I came mayor, the multi-generational and mixed income um community. And I think that is the best thing we can do for our community. So I am so excited about this. I love your calling it a housing accelerator. I think that's so positive and it's exactly what's happening. Um we're creating models that other communities are emulating and we're and showing what can be done and how it can be done. And we're working with significant core partners, both public and private, to have that transferred made transformative impact you're talking about. And I don't know, I can't say enough about how excited I am about how this impacts our future for our community. Thank you.
No, no need to be sorry. It's a huge accomplishment. So I'm gonna also, I see that we have two candidates in the audience here and I'm just going to talk a minute or two about four years ago at a uh eggs and issues, the candidates were asked, could you ever envision a time where city council would partner with development on infrastructure costs? And both councillor Baxter and I were like, well, that's how you get things done. And that was unheard of at the time. Scott, you were here. And uh so the cultural shift of recognizing that we have to incentivize developers, we can't just expect them to take the full cost if we also want attainable and affordable housing. And what I've seen is that shift, local developers who could easily build million dollar plus homes who want to do something for this community. They want housing where our police officers can live in town, where our teachers can live in town. Where our hospital workers, including those who make certain the hospital is clean, have a space for us to live. And what I've seen you do uh in that re- rain i- that area is incredible. I also would like to say that four years ago, we did not have an opportunity fund. We had very little money. We had had to spend what mu- uh reserves we did have, we had spent them down significantly to take care of our streets. And so I want to give a shout out as well to our city manager and to our finance department and for to all of the staff for the management of our resources. An opportunity fund allows us to respond to challenges and opportunities. We never know what's going to hit us, but we have a modest amount of funding available. And this to me is a wonderful um use of that. And and I'd finally like to say that the community is looking to us to demonstrate our priorities. And what we have heard and we know how important housing is, workforce housing. And what better way than to allocate five point two million dollars to one of our top priorities? So I want to recognize the cha- the sea change that in my mind has taken place and your efforts to partner with developers and to have them be ready to help us together in this effort. So thank you and thank you for a great presentation and your thinking. And a a final, just a thank you, city manager, for your leadership in this effort.
Um Mr. Tudhill, do we have a resolution number for this?
We do. It is resolution number two zero two three dash thirteen.
Wonderful, thank you. I would make the motion that we approve uh resolution two zero two three dash thirteen. Um amending uh the twenty twenty-three budget for the purpose of budget adjustments to the twenty twenty-three appropriations from the general fund for housing.
I'll second. Is there any more discussion?
To the general fund for housing, sorry.
Then let's call this vote.
Councillor Buell?
Yes.
Councillor Baxter?
Yes.
And Mayor Nozworthy.
Absolutely and proudly, yes. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have um a discussion and possible action to make amendments to the twenty twenty-two adopted budget and twenty twenty-three adopted budget and that will be Devon. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Excuse me, Devon Schmidt, uh Budget and Strategic Planning Officer. Um so this is a presentation to provide um discussion and possible action um to approve a twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three um budget amendment. Um and so I just wanted to discuss this amendment a little bit. Um so while this budget amendment does include some line item details, um it's really uh driven by an effort to provide um clarity around um the resolution and the request. Um and it's really an effort to comply with the current budget operating policy, which states um the level of control is at a fund and apartment level. Um this this council can recall that we've done a lot of effort to increase um our transparency um around our financial reporting and our partnership with council. Um so our goal is as staff is to really um continue to regain um trust among council and among the citizens so that we would be able to um pivot eventually to um what more of what the state allows, which is council approving it at a fund level um and what the city charter allows as well, um allowing the city manager to have authority to approve items. Um so as we continue to um work on that partnership, um we certainly look to hope that if we can bring that efficiency um to the city. Um and then I wanted to add another um note to this, that staff is always working on on continuous improvement practices. Um and looking at twenty twenty-four, um our intent will to be to capture the majority of these amendments during our reconciliation process um for any reappropriations. Um the practice um to include the prior year budget was a recommendation um by Jim Ray with Adams Group. Um and so we did do that in twenty twenty-two. So we were following a process here. Um but if council desires, staff can certainly look to address that um in a different manner. So I just wanted to add that um as we get started here. So um what is before you? Um and what we're looking for this evening is to approve the attached resolution authorizing budgetary transfers and additions or reduced appropriations for the fiscal budget years uh twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. So what I will do is take um council uh first through twenty twenty-two and explain um some of the amendments that we are looking at and then we'll move on to twenty twenty-three. Um and we'll look at those at a at a fun level and your packet, it does include that at at a line item level. So um starting off, uh the first item we have on there is really um looking at amendments in these category areas. So where um sufficient budgets and savings um are either increased to um cover the existing amendments. Um and so I had already mentioned with the budget policy, that really sets it at a department level, uh not at a fund level. And then um as this council recalls, um we did remove contingency in twenty twenty-one. Um and so whenever there's an employee retirement or separation, those are kind of a good example of a departmental overrun. Um availability of goods and services, um it represents items that couldn't be received by the end of twenty twenty-two. Um or the invoice didn't come in with a a January twenty-fifth deadline that finance has. And so following um GAAP, which is governmental accounting um principles, that requires that the item be paid for in the year they are received. And so with that, um several appropriations are included um for those items. And then project reappropriations, um projects that weren't reappropriated due to unforeseen circumstances. Um in that situation, the twenty twenty-two budget would be adjusted downward. Um again, this is an example of trying to provide clarity. Um if the budget wasn't appropriated downward, the funds are, they do just roll into fund balance at that point. So um with the projects that um are considered for reappropriation, um I think uh councillor Baxter just mentioned this, you know, we're still seeing supply chain issues as a result of the pandemic, labor shortages. And so um we also run into situations where we did in twenty-two where we didn't receive any bids for projects and things of that nature. So we are hopeful in twenty twenty-three that a lot of the projects that are um included in in the request for reappropriation um don't continue to have some of those obstacles as we move forward. So starting off with the the general fund, um this is a positive one. Our our revenues uh did in sales tax outperform the amended budget. Um looking at some of the departmental overruns, um as I had mentioned, staff departures and recruitment costs and and multiple departments did cause an overrun. Um so that some of those are related to attrition and retirements and then as well as the final mill levy for the certification with the fire district, that was another component as well. Um looking at the availability of goods and services, this includes a generator replacement for the nine-one-one center, um three vehicles and parks and recreation, um the Ida Bailey Lease Project um that finance is working on on base migration and um renew grants as well as ammunition that was um ordered and not yet received. For uh self-insurance, um there is a self-insurance supplement. And so this was a pivot um to the per employee per month model in twenty twenty-two. And that's really an effort to um stabilize a self-insurance fund. Um this will allow um budget staff and departments to be able to um forecast a self-insurance fund in a in a better manner. Um we have a great partnership with Human Resources and our um insurance broker where we meet with them quarterly now and we're um really looking at forecasting um where we're seeing some of those claims. Um in the grant fund, this includes um several reappropriations for projects. So um the stabilization and sustainability grant, the Bureau of Land Management and Fire Mitigation Grants, the American Rescue Plan, um lobby customer service enhancements um for public outreach. And that would be um looking at a potential kiosk um or another kiosk, the La Posta Road re- reappropriation. And then moving on into the airport, um so the airport previously participated in the city of Durango's um surf fund. And this is a request to pay off the remainder of the surf and the airport will operate their um surf fund, which is the capital equipment replacement fund. Um in the airport construction fund, several projects um are being requested to be reappropriated and that's the wastewater system upgrades, terminal expansion design phase, runway thirty-three twenty-one rehabilitation, taxiway A reconstruction, airline GSE parking area construction. And so those are all being requested to be reappropriated. And the Trash and Recycle Fund, we have a Green Durango Grants reappropriation. And this was for a project that they're looking to reappropriate so it can be completed in 23. And in the Construction Fund, this includes a library charging station for electric vehicles. Parks, Open Space and Trails. This has projects for reappropriation, which is the outdoor pickleball court, Smart 160 East, Trail Connection, Park, Trail and Rec Improvements, as well as Open Space. And in the Parks and Multimodal Sales Tax Fund, the 2015, there are several projects for reappropriation, including recreation facility improvements, the Animus River Trail Rank Park to Demon Bridge, Durango Mesa Park, Art River Trail, Santa Rita Park to CR 210, Downtown Next Steps, Communo Crossing, Midtown, 32nd Street and Lake Night Horse Improvements. In the Housing Fund, this includes several projects for reappropriation. This has to do with the Best Western Project, the $3 million that was received, as well as the project for that. ADU rebates, the planning grant, as well as appropriation for lodgers tax to housing. And in the Lodger's Tax Fund, again, this has to do with the governmental accounting principles. And the reappropriation includes several projects, as well as the collections that were approved in November by the ballot. In the Transportation Fund, this is a reappropriation for the remainder to complete the parking study. And the Capital Equipment Replacement Fund, this is receiving the funding that we previously described for the airport. And this is also looking to reduce the amount that was going to pay for the rescue vehicle as the general fund and the police department had sufficient revenues to cover this appropriation. And that is also was not received in 2022 and would be hopefully received in 2023, as long as those supply chain issues don't continue. Water Capital, I have, this is a longer list here, so I'm not going to read through all of these. But there are several projects that we are asking for reappropriation of into 2023. In the Sewer Capital Fund, we have some reappropriations as well for the Santa Rita Utilities Administration Building, North College Sewer Lines, Gator's Cyber Security Improvements. And in the Durango Renewal Fund, this is for Midtown Peak Grant and Self Insurance. We did see that the claims exceeded the annual budget. And this is really driven by 10 high claimants that we are working with on Human Resources and our broker for that. And then in Risk Management, Workers Compensation, we did have some claims there that were also an overrun in 22. So moving on to 2023, again, this would be looking to avoid any departmental overrun. So and then all as well as availability of goods. So this is going to be carrying forward any projects, any projects with reappropriations. And then we do also have some additional or new appropriations. And so these would be for unanticipated budget adjustments, since better information is now available, since the budget was reconciled in November. So in the, in the General Fund, again, these are looking at some additional or new appropriations. And so some of this does include illegal camp cleanup costs, street software for capital, snow hauling, it's still, I think it's still snowing. So that is one of those items. And then as well as the 205215 property evaluation. For the operating reappropriations, we have the On Base Migration Project, Mobile Space at Engineering, a lease contract, the three vehicles, the emergency generator and the ammunition, as well as the rescue vehicle. And continuing to, this is a new one, which is professional development. And so this is looking at continuing to build the executive leadership competencies. In the Grants Fund, there are several reappropriations that I had already discussed, but if we're looking at some of the new ones, the Durango Police Department did receive several grant awards. One is for an E citation that allows translation, a fentanyl investigation, a prosecutor grant and a peace officer behavioral support grant. And so those are some of the new requests for appropriations in 23. And Airport, again, that's looking at that professional development item. And Airport Construction Fund, we, this is looking at wastewater system upgrades, terminal expansion, the runway 321 and those other projects that we had previously discussed for reappropriation. For Trash and Recycle, the only new item that we have on here is continuing to build that, the professional development. In the Trash and Recycle Construction Fund, this is for the EV charging station with the reappropriation, plus there is an additional $11,000 being asked of in this line item that has to do with the project design and updated materials for cost increases. Parks, Open Space and Trails, we have talked about those items that were requested for reappropriation. There is also a new appropriation, which is looking at new natural lands open space plan. And in Parks and Multimodal, those were reappropriations that were listed in the previous slides. Housing Fund, once again, this is looking at the reappropriation requests. In the Lodger's Tax Fund, this is the same project. So e-bike reappropriations, park restrooms designs, destination management plan, park safety enhancements, Chapman Hill, ice rink and lodger's tax, as well as the arts and culture funding for two remaining projects. In the Transportation Fund, so this is a reappropriation of the parking study. But there is also several requests for new appropriations in here. A lot of these are funded by CHRISPA funding or federal funding, either through the 5311 grant or that CHRISPA funding. And so those are the requests there. And in the Water Operating Fund, this is a request for appropriations. This was in the CIP. But since this is O and M in nature, we're looking to move this to the Operating Fund in Water. Water Capital Fund, these are the reappropriations that were previously listed, as well as the Sewer Capital Funds previously listed from 22 as reappropriations. And same thing with the Durango Renewal Partnership, request for reappropriations. The General Fund Capital Projects Fund, so what this is looking to do is move the county contribution from County Road, for County Road 251, 250, 251 to the 42 Fund, which is the Capital Projects Fund, so that 2019 sales tax is able to remain just the sales tax portion of it. So this is just the county contribution being moved from one fund to the other or the request to. And then in the Streets, there are several projects that we're looking for appropriation, which is North College Design, Pot-Holing, Landscape Architect and Right-A-Way Acquisition. There is one request of staff, and that would be to, if we were able to request, if council were to approve this motion, that the assessed test master plans, street assets could actually be utilized for an asphalt resurfacer. I believe this was brought up at IAB. Go ahead, Mayor.
Yes, it was.
Okay. And that's due to the, the severe need that we have to correct and fix potholes that are pretty prevalent right now. And so that would be the request on that particular item, and Allison is here as well. And then the other piece again is really moving that $3.3 million of county contribution over to that 42 Fund or the Capital Projects Fund. So with all of that, it's, I can answer any questions, but it's the recommendation that City Council by motion, approve the attached resolution authorizing the budgetary transfers and additional reduced appropriations with the request that the asphalt recycler takes the place of the study that was listed in the 2019 Fund.
Questions from Council? I will also add that at the IAB meeting last night, this was only last night, Allison presented, and because of the 2019 sales tax, the IAB discussed those projects and supported the presentation that Allison made for the use of those funds, including the asphalt recycler. Thank you. But I'll open it up for questions or comments from Council.
Thank you for your presentation. I just want to say, I appreciate, I so much appreciate the fluidity with what, what we, how we change things now and how detailed it is, because it would be really easy for you just to come up here and say, hey, we need to, you know, have some budget adjustments in 2023 of a significant decrease, right? Like that, like, and just go through it, but it's so transparent and it's so, I, I, just following industry standards and, and what we do now. Anyone can take a look here or an Open Gov or whatever and see exactly how things are moving and why. Like we'd have any idea that we'd have this much snow and this much plowing happening and this many potholes and the need for things change and shift. And I appreciate, you know, coming forward with things like this and being transparent. So thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation.
I have a lot of questions and a lot to say on this topic. So I, I also think it's wonderful that we're talking about these things in ways that we've never talked about them and that they're transparent and open. But I, I'm a little confused. Was it the case when we appropriated money in 2022 to increase expenditures? Did we also adjust the budget at that point in time for 2020?
Are you talking about what we did last February?
No, I'm talking anytime in 2022 when council appropriated and agreed to spend more dollars on something. Budget adjusted to reflect that new appropriation.
It was, it would be in the amended column?
So there are, are there any items currently in this recommendation that were appropriated last year that didn't get in to an amended budget?
Are there any items in this request that didn't already end up in amended? Yes.
Why? Why were they not done? Why did they not adjust the budget at the time the appropriation was approved in 2022?
Okay, sorry. The answer to that is no. I understand your question now. So this, none of these previous requests for 2022 have already been in the amended budget.
Right, but they were appropriated by council in 2022.
These are an additional appropriation.
So they were not appropriated by council in 2022 for 2022?
Correct. So this would be a request to amend the budget for 2022.
Why? Were they in the budget originally? Is that what you're telling me?
So anywhere where there was a, if there's a reduction, they were in the budget originally. And so those are requests to reappropriate into 2023. If it's a
I get that. So let's start right there with that statement, because I, I think this is, is really critical. A budget is designed to forecast what you anticipate you will be doing. And I understand that council has to reappropriate money. We can't just take it from last year and, and move it forward. That's totally, totally what we've worked for, for the last four years. However, there is nothing in the Colorado budget statutes that say that you reduce your budget if you don't spend the money.
Right.
So why are we reducing the 2022 budget because we didn't spend the money?
When we worked with Adams Group, it was a recommendation that we could amend the 22 budget after the fact. And so with the reductions, that is really just to show that it's reappropriating to the next year?
So bud, that's not what budgets are designed for. Budgets are designed for you to measure your operations and other capital projects, things like or activities against, so that you can know what you forecasted and what you thought you were going to do, what you subsequently appropriated additionally.
Sure.
And how, how you performed against that. If you go back and amend the budget so that it reflects what actual was, then there's no performance indicator there. And when you go from year to year, you have no measurement. So I can, I, I, I personally, I can't support changing the revenues, for example, in 2022. We budgeted for revenues. Revenues are different. If they'd gone down, would we have done it? Would you be recommending that we reduce the budget to show a reduction in revenues? That's not what budgets are for. And the, the state, their concern is that if you receive extra revenues or you want to adjust expenses, the point is that you appropriate money to those expenses. You don't change the revenues in the budget and you don't reduce what you thought you might spend in the 2022 budget. The 2022 budget is done. It's done. And the only time that we might change something there was if we had appropriated money and we hadn't put it into the amended budget. I mean, this is my perspective on it after reading and the years I've spent doing finance. I totally agree that for 2023, we have to appropriate dollars that we didn't, for projects that we didn't do in 2022. I completely agree with that. So I'm seeing those as two separate things. But we, we don't appropriate money from the 2022 budget into the 2023 budget.
Right.
There's no mechanism for that. There are no journal entries that happen to do that. There's no debit and credit system there. That, that's not the, the, the need. And so I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm totally frustrated by this because I know we did this last year. We did five adjustments last year. And last year, we were catching up from a horror story of finance department, getting finance online, getting everything going. Okay, great. I get it. But we have, I wrote it down somewhere. We have 17 items totaling 11-plus million dollars that you're asking us to adjust in the 2022 budget. I'm sorry, I, when I go back and look at year to years and how we're doing, I want to know what we budgeted for. And I want to be able to measure our performance. That's what we do. I can't measure the city manager's performance if my budgets for 2022 have all been adjusted to actual. Why have a budget? So I, I, I can't, I, I can't support the 2022 portion of this. So I, I can support the 2023 portion. So for me, this has to be two different resolutions, maybe. I don't know.
Can you tell me the rationale for, is it Adams Group? Who did you say that you guys worked with? That recommended that we change past budgets?
Yeah, so we worked with the Adams Group. So back in 2021, I want to say, when we were preparing the annual comprehensive financial report, Adams Group recommended that if there were any items that were over budget for the prior year budget, to bring a request to council for reappropriate, or not for reappropriation, but to amend the, the prior year budget.
And is there any, like, is there any rationale by, behind that? Like, why?
Well, so when it pertains to expenditures, and Counselor Baxter, I'd love to understand more, is it the reductions in the 22 budget? Or is it the increases? Is it all of it?
Anything that we appropriated in 2022 that didn't get into an amended 2022 budget, I can support that change. Because we appropriated it, and if the budget didn't get adjusted to reflect it, I'm okay with that. That makes perfect sense to me. A project that we didn't do, there was no council action to say, no, we, we're not doing that project. It was through a, through a bunch of circumstances, like no bids received or supply chain issues. It wasn't because we did an appropriation to, to say, no, we're not doing that project. And so that's just a reflection of when, when you say, why are, why is this $5 million less or $2 million less? Well, it's because the supply chain issues. Great. That's fine. It's okay if the actual doesn't meet the budget. That's okay. That's one of the conversations you have to figure out things like what Allison is doing, is to make bidding processes better. You go, okay, here's why this was weird. Okay, we need to do something different. And she's done that. And I think that's great. And I want to be able to reflect that. I want to see that as we move forward. So, it isn't, I'm fine with anything that we've appropriated, amending the 2022 budget. Great, but just because we didn't get a project done? We're not here to change the budget to actual.
Could, could I, first of all, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
No, 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 no. I, I appreciate, I appreciate the, the research and, and thinking going into it. Could I suggest a possible course of action? Which is, we look at the appropriation of 2023, because that would not be changing the budget. It would be amending, yes. And perhaps between now and the next, in April 4th, you have a, a, a review of practices. And perhaps you can explain to the council if there are other communities that do something like this, why? Adams recommendation, why? And, but also consider councillor Baxter's point. And, and I agree that we need a measurement of, are we, what does our forecasting look like? And are we appropriately forecasting our expenditures and, and revenues? So, I would like to not have a joint resolution, but one that looks at just 2023. And an opportunity for you to rethink this process, you as a team with the city manager and provide a rash, a, a, perhaps a more convincing rationale.
Or not.
Or not, yes. Or not, or, so you, an opportunity to rethink this. And to, is, and so I'd like to say, does that make sense to council?
I think that makes sense. I think that was my question, like, why? Like, I want to know, is that best practices? Is it, because it doesn't really, we shouldn't change the budget to match what actually happened. That's what we do with our finance, right? Like, that's our, what we already do. We, and it's okay, it's okay that it snowed 10 times more than it normally does and we have more expenses and our budget doesn't reflect that. It shouldn't reflect that. If we budget for a snow year like this every year, that's irresponsible on our part, right? Like, and, and so we should be able to see that and have line items as to why, we know why the budget is off, under, over, what, whatever. I don't, I don't, I don't have the expectation as a councillor and I would hope no one in our community has the expectation that our budget reflects actual spending. And so, I, but I do want to know, why did they say that that's okay to do? Because it doesn't make sense, it doesn't, I agree with Kim, it kind of doesn't make sense to change budgets to actuals. Now, for 2023, yes, like, I, I'm happy to look at it and let's do it. But if, yeah, if something's not in there that we appropriated, then that's different. Yes, I agree.
And then, 2024, for the, kind of what the state statute says is that council can approve at a fund level. So, none of these requests are due to exceeding a fund level of an appropriation for expenditures.
But that kind of goes back, though, to the same thing that I said about us not being able to evaluate the city manager's performance. If within your departments and within your line items and within your divisions, you're changing things around to make them be actual, he can't evaluate your performance either. So, I, I understand what you're saying, but it, it doesn't really ring good for me.
If I can, mayor and council, it's a, it's an interesting, what would I say, just kind of situation. When we came in and you get a recommendation from the Adams Group, we, we took it, last year, we went through and so we were kind of repeating a, a, a practice. And doesn't necessarily mean it's the best practice. Doesn't necessarily mean that, that it can change, because we're also dealing with a, a new way, if you will. Because before, there was concerns in regards to how transfers were made. There was concerns about carryover projects. And sometimes a process which may have worked last year doesn't really ring true in how it works this year. And this is a, a part for us to get our feedback from council. So, getting this from council, I think, makes a perfect sense for us to reanalyze it and go back and see if the Adams Group recommendation was just as a recommendation, which I'm pretty sure that that's probably what it was and not a, hey, you should do this. I think sometimes we get caught between trying to, what we think is being very transparent and trying to show everything, what the details are, to, sometimes that cuts against a double-edged sword. So, I think we definitely appreciate the feedback and it's something that we can always improve upon in our processes and something that we always will. And we can go back and I think they charted a course that the mayor outlined. If that is favorable to council, it's something we definitely can do.
So, to just kind of clarify for me to make sure I understood. If there's anything that we appropriated in 2022 that is not in the budget, that would be one resolution that we would do. We would do the resolution for 2023 with items that didn't get accomplished and we would like to accomplish them in 2020. We'd get that into the budget. Is that?
Correct.
Okay. Those, that's, really makes sense to me. And then to come back with maybe a further discussion of these, what seem odd to me, adjustments to 2022.
We would, for, that's similar. What, what I want to do is, first of all, I want to acknowledge your listening to council and hearing our concerns and give you the opportunity to rethink your request and your processes and the rationale for that or not and the recommendation that may have come from the Adams Group. So, I want to allow you to have some time to come back or to say, hey, we've heard about it and we think you're right. But I want that opportunity for you to think this through. And I appreciate, city manager, I appreciate you hearing what we're saying.
And so, after that monologue, I, you know how much I appreciate all the work you've done. You know how much I appreciate how much finance is done and how much every department has done and how much the city manager has done. I mean, I, I say that all the time. I so appreciate it. But I have to speak up when something doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense to me and I actually think it makes it less transparent to the community and very confusing to the community. And so, the thing I'm trying to do is let's go for simplicity, ease of understanding and be able to monitor what we're actually doing. So, I, I thank you so much, because I know how far we've come. You and I spent many hours together working on spreadsheets. So, I just, I want to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to emphasize that. This, the statement that you've spent hours of working on spreadsheets and that the city manager has made the staff available to do that, to rethink and to take. And that's something that any councillor has the opportunity for education or discussion. So, I appreciate you making that available. I'd like to see if there is a, first of all, interim city attorney, I, I know we may be looking at a different resolution that's not worded within this, because we had a combined resolution, I believe.
Yeah, and the numbers have to be reflective of the resolution. So, they would have to, that would have to be redone.
So, I believe you would need to come back to us at the April 4th meeting with the two, the possibly two resolutions, the 2023 and as councillor Baxter said, anything that did not make it into the amended budget for 2022. And then that's your opportunity as well to rethink your proposed actions and either amend that you're thinking or provide a stronger rationale. Does that make sense to everyone? You're welcome.
Thank you.
Again, thank you. And I will say, I wanted the public to know, four years ago, we didn't, council didn't reappropriate things. They just rolled over. We had one fund that had been going for 15 years with money in the CIP project. So, that is progress. Thank you. All right. We are on to council reports and actions. And I will note that we are at least an hour and 15 minutes ahead of the proposed schedule. So, I'm pleased with that. Yes, and I don't seem to have a listing of what's on there.
I have the airport. Just airport and infrastructure, because the other, oh, no, you're Parson Rick now. I forgot. Okay, I'll do airport real quick. We met on March 16th. We got the final GMP received on February 10th. We have a groundbreaking ceremony for Phase 1A scheduled for April 25th. Yes. The Phase 1B is under final FAA review and it's anticipated that on April 23rd, we're going to start the design review committee. We revised or we discussed the food and beverage concession RFP for, like, the interim part between now and like when the big airport opens. And so, Tony had great ideas and the commission had some great thoughts on, you know, local and all, all the things. And so, that's going to go out for, has new goals, brands, revenues, environmental sustainability aspects. So, all good there. And then, I think the only other big thing is American. We, I said the last meeting, I think, that United was bringing in Airbus, did I? Okay, and American now just announced that they are as well, starting June 3rd, but just on Saturdays. So, there you go. And, I mean, there were some other things, but those are the big things.
All I, I said it earlier, the infrastructure advisory board met. We, Allison presented some recommended reappropriations and it was supported by the IAB. It was a very short meeting, actually. I think we were finished in about half an hour.
Okay, so, Parson Rick Advisory Board Meeting. The biggest conversation had to do with the letter that they want to send to council regarding the boards and commissions reorganization. But there, I, I will come back to that, because there was also a Chapman Hill update on rope toes that will be going in, two different ones. And a huge problem with that was supply chain issues. And so, it won't be able to happen at, at least until the summer, but everyone's very excited about it. And then the update on the Durango Mesa Park Foundation and how cities working together, we, which we had already gotten as a council. So, coming back to the reorganization of the, of the boards and commissions, I don't remember if we've actually received the letter yet or not, because I've seen it so many times. So, we have, okay. During that discussion, what I realized and, and pointed out was that one of the reasons why the Parson Rick Board was so frustrated with this was a lack of communication by their council liaison at the time, this summer, councillor Bosman's, that council was discussing this and had study sessions about it and the presentation that staff had made about how the possible change could come about and what that could look like. And so, because they hadn't had those conversations with their liaison, they didn't really know that this was happening. And so, when I came on board in, I think it was November, that was one of the first conversations I had with them and they were very upset at not having it earlier. So, so I kind of want to say that in their defense, they were taken a little bit by surprise. And I just wanted to make sure you knew that. That's all I have.
And, and I think it is important to recognize that part of the role of the liaison is to update the boards on council policy thinking and direction. That is, in part, why we attend those meetings, to make certain that the advisory board to answer questions and to provide an update on any possible directions council is taking. Thank you. All right. Is that it for, I think that councillor Bosman's had a multimodal advisory board meeting, which he is not here to update on, and that would be it. So, thank you. All right, we will look at a possibly going into executive session. Bear with me, we will read this, we will read this twice, once when I announce it and then when we have the motion, if we have a motion. This is about a discussion and possible action concerning a motion to convene an executive session to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, sale or transfer of an interest in real property located at 1235 Camino del Rio, River City Hall and 201 East 12th Street, 9R Administration Building, and to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiation and direct negotiators as permitted by CRS 2464024A and E. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we convene an executive session to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, sale or transfer of an interest in real property located at 1235 Camino del Rio, known as River City Hall and 201 East 12th Street, known as the 9R Administration Building, and to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiation and direct negotiators as permitted by CRS 24-6-4024A and E.
I'll second. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Councillor Buehl?
Yes.
Councillor Baxter?
Yes.
And Mayor Noseworthy?
Yeah, they don't have to be here.
Yep. Alright, good to go.
What time is it? I can't see the clock.
Eight thirty seven.
Right. The time is now eight thirty seven and the executive session has been concluded. The participants in the executive session were Bill Tut Hill, interim city attorney, Jessica Buell, counselor, Kim Baxter, counselor, Jose Madrigal, city manager, Erin Hyder, assistant city manager, Scott Shine, community development director, and myself, Barbara Noesworthy. Did I miss anyone? No. For the record, council met an executive session for discussion and possible action concerning a motion to convene an executive session to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, sale, or transfer of an interest in real property located at twelve thirty five Camino Del Rio, otherwise known as River City Hall, and two oh one East Twelfth Street, nine R Administration Building, and to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiation and direct negotiators as permitted by CRS twenty four six four oh two four A and E. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the exec executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. Seeing none, the next item of the agenda is just to state that we provide a direction for the negotiators. We now have a second possibility of going into executive session. This is an executive session for discussion and possible action concerning a motion to convene an executive session to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, sale, or transfer of an interest in real property located in downtown Durango that is currently leased to the Durango and Silverton Narrow Gauge Railroad Company for parking, and to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiation and direct negotiators as permitted by CRS twenty four six four oh two four A and E. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to convene an executive session to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, sale, or transfer of an interest in real property located in downtown Durango that is currently leased to the Durango and Silverton Narrow Gauge Railroad Company for parking, and to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiation and direct negotiators as permitted by CRS twenty four dash six dash four oh two four A and E.
I'll second.
Any discussion, please call the vote.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
And Mayor Noesworthy.
Yes, we will now go into executive session. ...been concluded. The participants in the executive session were Bill Tuthill, Jessica Buehl, Kim Baxter, Jose Madrigal, Erin Hyder, Scott Shine, and Barbara Noesworthy. For the record, council met an executive session for discussion and possible action concerning a motion to convene an executive session to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, sale, or transfer of an interest in real property located in downtown Durango that is currently leased to the Durango and Silverton Narrow Gauge Railroad Company for parking, and to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiation and direct negotiators as permitted by CRS 246-402-4A and E. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. Seeing none, the next item on the agenda is adjournment. Thank you.
You say our agenda is earlier than before because we're efficient meeting.
I will. Thank you. I'll see you in a couple weeks.
Thank you, guys.